Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Work Session for Monday, October the 3rd. I will call the meeting to order and may I have a motion that the agenda be approved as presented?
May I?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. We will begin with our reports section and we will begin with Ms. Kelly Klutz for the Construction Budget Report. Board members, if you'll please start out with 3.1 and let me know when you're there. Allswell, Ms. Klutz, it's all you.
Thank you. As I'm pulling up that document, I will ask if there are any questions on the report. There was not any significant changes to the Construction Budget Report this month. Just primarily furniture and equipment purchases from Harold Winkler.
Board members, comments or questions? Hearing none, I will ask you to carefully exit out at the small X. I know it appears everyone's pretty familiar and comfortable now with how we're doing this. Is everyone good? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Klutz. We will move to 3.2. We will ask Mr. Jason Van Huclum to please come to the podium and we will start with the Advanced Placement and SAT Report. Thank you.
Thank you. Had a chance to look at that. It's a new report that the federal government will be tracking with no race to the top funding. They're tracking participation rate and they're also tracking the pass rate. Had an opportunity to look at the data there. Good news is, we've gone up in both of those categories over the last two years. And that's for our AP tests. Are there any questions?
Board members, I know you've had this and went through it and probably extensively. I'll begin on Mr. Kiger's side if there's any comments or questions. I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was an IT issue. Ms. Dr. Probst, do you mind coming up? Ms. Carpenter, anything on your end? Mr. Farr?
I'm good.
Anyone on this end?
No, you're talking for the report overall or just the first page?
Just the AP report.
Okay. But I mean the whole?
The whole thing, yeah.
Okay. We're not going to go through this verbatim tonight. We're just, we know you've had time to look through it, so.
No, I just am curious, I guess, what the, in the strategic plan, I don't think we had targets on AP exams particularly. Are there going to be any sub-goals?
Yeah, we're going to make that a part of our department improvement plan for high schools with the, following our guideline of trying to be in the top 10 for both of those rates.
Okay.
And we're working back the slide that shows the next steps, kind of shows some of the strategies we're going to employ to attack both of those goals. But yes, so that'll be a sub-goal that'll be monitored through CNI Department.
Because one thing I was, Mr. Kirk sent us, Dr. Kirk, sent us the Charlotte Magazine article?
Yes.
On the high schools. And so, you know, some years ago, and I have to say it was 99, 2000, Northwest Cabarrus was like number eight in that list. And then we had kind of fallen, and I'm sure the lists were done differently over the years and whatnot, but we had kind of fallen out of it completely as a district. And now we had, I know Hickory Ridge, Concord, JM, Northwest Cabarrus, I don't remember if they were all in there or not, but I mean, all in that top 15, 20 range, which was very nice.
Yeah, it's definitely something to celebrate. Absolutely.
And Jason?
And it's directly related to these AP, the number of kids taking AP tests.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, I know the last next step item states investigate new scheduling model for 2012. But I'm assuming we'll be hearing some of that at our retreat?
Absolutely.
October the 22nd?
Yeah, we're going to investigate a modified schedule to allow kids to have greater access to AP tests, or AP classes.
Okay, great. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Monnet?
I have one question, it may be an obvious one. The 91% taking the test, is that 91% of the students that took an AP class?
That's correct, yeah. So, of the students who are in the classes enrolled, 91% chose to take the actual exam. And students in Cabarrus County do have to pay for that and that is an additional cost so some student, they're not forced to take the test. But still, 91% did choose to take the exam.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Shue?
Yeah, Jason, I was just wondering, you know, on the 2011 pass rate, you know, our district total was 55%. Was there a state? I didn't see that there was a state.
Yeah, that's not released yet. We expect to have that in January. If you look at the slide before that, from 2010, 55% was rated about number 40 in the state. So we're curious to see where that rank is going to put us once they release that in January.
I'm sure you'll pass that on it from?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jason. Next, we will move to 3.3. This is the QSCB update and we'll have Mr. Lynn Wiki to the podium, please. Lynn, could I get you to key your mic instead of that other one? I think there's a little bit of feedback when they're coming to the podium. Board members, are you there? Everybody there?
Sorry for the delay. The form that you have before you is in two parts. One is the basic status of the funds, which we've been using, but we've modified this form rather substantially from last month to this so that you would have as up-to-date and accurate information or picture, if you will, of where the money's at in all project cases. So we don't have, I should say, we do have pretty much all of dollars either encumbered or paid to date are now identified and remaining balances as well. In this case, we still list some dates of completion, but we have another document that we created that goes into much more detail about each project's planned schedule. And I'll get to that in a minute. I think the main thing that I want to point out at what you're looking at right now in the funded project status is really that we are moving quickly ahead. I wanted to let you know that I finally was able to contact someone at DPI this morning and we were told that even though it's highly recommended that we meet the 10% expenditure fund for October 15th, they just don't want any forms. They have no forms required to submit. So that was asked of me by the county commissioners and I assured them that we have expended the monies, but we are not going to be sending any forms in, so you won't see any information like that. But clearly, if you look to your right, if you added the, I know Kelly will hit me if I say this wrong, but if you added the columns to the, I want to say, it's called the amount encumbered and the paid to date, in totaling those numbers as you go down, you will have identified the amount of money we've so far committed on these projects and it well exceeds the 10% margin, or goal, rather. So, in reality, where we're at is that we're moving along. Most of the projects that we had started in the summer have been completed. We have two of the hoods installed, as an example, and we have a third one that'll be going in at the end of October. And the fourth hood, as you know, was sort of placed on hold until we find additional monies. That's the Colton Web Hood. But all three, all the other three hoods will be in place by the end of October. Things like the PLC and J.N. Freeze, we're doing some finish-up work on the data systems and wireless systems in those building elements, but that too shall be completed shortly. And now we're starting to look at bidding the larger projects. We plan to bid by, I believe it's October 28th. The roofing project at J.N. Freeze will be bidding either late October, early November. The work at Central Cabarrus High School, the window replacements, window and door replacements, as well as the modifications to the front office area. So that's a fairly substantial project. We will be more than likely bidding out some of the work at Central, excuse me, at Concord High School, as well as Northwest High School. And I think as we get into the schedules in a few minutes, you'll see that all of those are relatively close. The one thing I will say is that we will be bidding projects such as the chiller projects, those are going to be done piecemeal. We will be bidding the actual chiller replacements to be done this winter, which is when they're not in use. And then we'll be doing the rest of the controls work in the schools next summer. So there'll be a split, actually, when those projects are done. So just taking, I don't know if you can go down, I think we tied these together, so I'm going to try that and see. As you go through this document, you'll find at the bottom, there is a page of the scheduling document, we call it the milestone spreadsheet. And in all cases, we, excuse me, I thought I was over that. In all cases, we now have schedules established for when we plan on actually bidding and constructing the projects. And many of these projects are now in the design review and design development stages. And as you can see, quite a few of them have either late November, early December, and early January bids, bid dates, with some going on as late as early spring of next year. But as I've mentioned in the past, it is our hope that the majority of these projects will be bid and underway by certainly no later than early 2012. And our hope is that we would complete the majority of them by the end of summer of 2012. Any questions?
Board members, any comments or questions?
Question. Now, for instance, the gymnasium over at Northwest, now will that be done during the summer of 2012 or will that, will they be able to use it? Do you think it would be completed during 2012? Where they'd be able to use it during that year?
In the school year of 2012.
Yeah.
That's our hope. One of the nice things about the gymnasium project is that it has a lot of work that is new and exterior to the existing building. So we'll be able to do a large part of that project without disturbing much of the interior of the gymnasium at all. It's when we take down the connecting walls and start to modify some of the existing spaces that you'll see impact on the existing structure. But we would hope to start that, the external work, if you will, or the addition work in the spring of next year because it won't have a big impact on the use of the existing gym, and then finish the work in the summer.
And the other question is, another one that's real concerned to me is cafeteria over at Concord. Will they get any use of that anytime during the school year of 2012?
That project, we will bid and begin, I'm going to say preliminary construction work in the spring of next year. But it's an eight-month project because of the unusual circumstances of trying to build that building, or build that addition within the existing courtyard. A lot of that work is going to be very tedious, some of it will be handwork. A lot of it will have to be craned into place, so it's a difficult and very complex project, even though it's relatively small in scale. And the idea is that we'd start some preliminary work, what I mean by preliminary is we will start to develop the logistics of how the contractor will enter the building and create corridors for them to be able to do that. We'll also start working on the second floor classroom exiting portion of that project, probably in late spring. We'll do a major part of the work in the summer, but we will be actually working into the fall of 2012 on that project. And unfortunately, it would mean that the kids will have to eat elsewhere. They'll be able to get their food from the dining room, but they'll have to take it elsewhere in the building. And we're working with the principal and her staff to arrange that, but.
So it doesn't look like they'll have, it'll probably be the fall then before they'll really be able to use that cafeteria then of 12 then?
Yeah, I'm thinking October, November.
Before they'll be able to use, so that really would be of the next year then?
Or the middle of, you know, the fall semester, yes.
I'm confused now because you said October, November, but the completion date on the chart says June, June of 12. I think the date for start is wrong because it's January of 11, which has already passed. So is that, I mean, January of 12 and then finish in June of 12?
No, that's an error then.
Oh, that one, okay. So that's what you're talking about, from the January 12, eight months, so October, November?
And even January, I'm thinking, you know, we'll bid it in January, but we're not going to start work in that period of time.
I was listening to you and reading this at the same time, so I didn't quite put all that together.
Yeah, the hope is, we'd like to bid as many things as we can, as early as we can. You know, as you can imagine, getting steel is time-consuming and other things related to that project are going to be difficult to coordinate. We have a large skylight going in over a portion of that. So all those things have to be pre-ordered so that when we're ready to go, we can go. But when I talked to the architects, and I'm not sure about the mix-up on the dates, when we talked to the architects fairly recently, there was the idea that we would run into the fall with construction. So I'll review this again and update it for you more carefully next month, but at least in talking with, that gentleman, no, Todd, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you gentlemen were here, excuse me.
We're actually on track to finish.
Oh, okay, come on up, I'm sorry. So I've got old information.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's a lot going on, there's a lot of shuffling and date-changing, but right now for the two, the first two Concord projects, the cafeteria and the auditorium, they're being bid together as one package. We're completing the construction documents as we speak, plan on submitting those for permit and through DPI within the next day or two. And then advertising for bids, I don't remember the exact date, but in a couple of weeks. So the construction could start in December and we could get some work done over the holiday break and then hopefully have all the construction complete on those two phases by the end of summer so that when the kids come back to school, school year 2012, that work would be done. That's the plan. Everything has to work perfectly smoothly, but that's the plan.
I'm going to throw you a real curve here and it's only because we just came from the county commission meeting. That weight room is down below the line of where we think we're not going to be able to continue if we run out of funds. Did you have the drawings for that or do you have the drawings? Is that one complete project out there or did we subdivide that into what we knew we could afford possibly and what we wouldn't be able to? Is that part of your project or was it dropped below the line and you haven't done anything on it?
We have not done anything on the weight room or the vocational room at Concord High. Those are below the line.
Would it have been beneficial, or would it be beneficial to us to be able to have had those plans and designs drawn all at one time and to have done that as one continuous project versus subdividing those out? Or will you think it may not be?
Continuous, you mean with cafeteria and the auditorium?
An auditorium. Because of how the staging and all the equipment already been out there and the ability to keep moving.
I don't think that it would make any difference to combine those two because, you know, the weight room and the vocational are completely separate building and they're far away from the cafeteria and the auditorium. So I don't know that there would be any benefit to combining them. But so far, we've not done anything on those two because they're below the line.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm sorry, that was just something that came up today.
Ms. Fertanbaugh, did you have a?
Yes. It's kind of a good segue because this form, at the last time we saw it, was making the decision of the below the line and taking some money out for servers on a couple of projects and whatnot. And so it looks like we've kind of lost that subtraction of those two $15,000 elements on the two, and I forget which school's there, but I'm sure Dr. Probst remembers. And also, over in the project status on the right, those that are below the line are not consistently marked. So some of them are marked as delete, some are marked as on hold, some are marked as pending. If you could just get those updated so that we, an on hold, for example, would be below the line, so.
First of all, just, this is the same list. The last, if you go to the Northwest Practice Fields and down, it all says, it says designed to be determined and status notes pending.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at page one.
I'm sorry.
It says it's in preliminary design. I'm not looking at the, there's inconsistency actually between page three and page one and two.
Okay.
So if that can just be all synced up?
Yes, absolutely.
Because page one and two tells me more about the numbers, but for example, some of the projects are marked as zero, but yet other ones are marked as that we have an amount encumbered. So for example, the Concord weight room, if it's below the line, it's showing that 10,340 is encumbered. Why would it be encumbered if it hasn't started?
There were design fees assigned to that, but I.
Even though it's on hold?
Yes.
So they're assigned, but they're not being, they're not truly encumbered because we're not starting on it, right?
They're under contract.
So even if we pull out and don't do that project due to lack of funding, we still have to pay that?
My recommendation is you design it. And the reason for that is, is we all agree that those projects were necessary and ideally we'd like to do them at some point in the future.
Okay.
My recommendation is when we have the money set aside to pay the architects to design it, I think, you know, if the board agrees that we should go forward with the design work, even if we have to put it on the shelf, the worst thing that we'd be doing is later at date updating it for code changes, but those should be minimal.
Yeah, and the space isn't going to change.
No.
No, that's fine. I just, I didn't understand why if it's on on hold, why it says encumbered. Because if you can just kind of, I mean, I think both views, the page one, two view and the page three view are all very valuable. It just didn't kind of like connect the whole story.
Absolutely, no, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Lynn, Kelly, I hate to put you on the spot, but since we just came from the county commission, do you mind giving the board an update on what was actually the response from the county commission regarding the request for the sales tax that we had sent the letter for?
The request was for the QSCB bonds to take that sales tax refund. Normally what they do is they apply the sales tax refund back to the debt payment. That has been the normal tasks for the last two or three years. Prior to that, we would get all of the sales tax back into the project and use it toward the project. But over the last couple of years, it was just furniture and equipment and that type thing. If it was construction, it went back to the debt payment. So we have asked, since these projects, we're not going to get through the project list, we thought it would be wise to ask the county to allow us to apply the sales tax back into the project lines and see if we'd get further down into the project list. And we also indicated after some conversations with Pam Dubois that they didn't have to respond with a positive or negative today, that we could delay that answer after the bidding of those projects to see how far into the projects we'd get. And then based on where we fall in that project line item, that they could tell us, okay, we'll allow you to apply that. Because the sales tax refund goes into a contra account and sits there. So we don't know how much it is right now and won't know until later. So essentially, they've tabled it and will make a decision later. So again, they can make the decision now or they can make the decision later, they can give Mike Downs the authority to make the decision on a project-by-project basis or a piecemeal basis or at the end of the project basis.
Comments?
Kelly, how much would we be looking at, you think, possibly getting back on the sales tax?
You only get sales tax on your material, your supplies and materials. So much of this, the QSCB is service and labor and you're not going to get sales tax on it, so it's hard to tell. Looking at the history of our COPs projects recently, it's been anywhere from 200,000 to 600,000. So we're not looking at anywhere at that amount at all. So I would be surprised if it were 100,000, something like that. It's going to be a much smaller amount, but certainly 100,000, we would definitely would take us further down that list and we would like to have it applied to the projects. The interest rate that we're paying on the QSCB bonds are a point, is three-quarters of a percent. So certainly if the county had to fund these projects in a different debt issue, you would be paying a substantial amount of interest more than this rather than just allowing us to take this sales tax and apply it back to the projects.
Any other comments or questions?
And that was the actual discussion that Lynn and Kelly and I had as we left the county commission because we stated that, you know, it will be projects that we'll have to complete at some point in time, you know, they're not going to go away. So it's in the best interest of the county commission to actually understand that this is a perfect opportunity to take that money and to use it because putting it in another program or using additional monies is going to cost them a whole lot more in interest and additional debt service, which is actually almost an oxymoron to what was being stated. So, you know, I feel like we need to, as much as you can, talk to your county commissions to get them to understand that this is a perfect opportunity. There's going to be some schools that may not get some completed projects that we promised in the past. And with the delaying of the selling of the bonds, it got us behind the eight ball to begin with. We've lost the construction time of the summer, which was a priority for us. It's the primary time to be building and we've lost that. So we've been behind the eight ball to begin with. So we would like to make a little bit of headway here and that would be one of the ways to be able to get down in there is to use that sales tax money, which has not been budgeted as of yet. I think that was a little confusing today, that they thought that that might have been the issue, but it's not been budgeted yet. So they have an opportunity to really look at that and do the right thing. I appreciate you giving us an update, okay?
Any other comments or questions? Sure.
Another question, and I'm not sure if you, on the vocational building, is that going to add for extra students or is that just remodeling actually what they've got for Concord?
I don't have the definition of the project with me. I believe that was actually addition for additional program space for the kids and some additional storage. Todd, do you remember the program requirements for that?
I think the desire was to be able to provide some space for that new fire training program that they have.
And that's one thing that's such a good program. I hate to see us not be able to do that. That has been such a great program and to add more children, I hate to see us not be able to do that. I really do. That has been such a successful program and that's one, and that's dropped below the line. And that's something I hate to see us not to be able to do. You've done the design work on that.
We have not done the design work. The only thing we've done on both vocational and the weight room is sort of existing conditions and trying to establish what's already there. And we've had some preliminary discussions with the principal at the school there to try to determine what the needs are, but we haven't really sorted through and figured out the best way to handle that yet. And then when it dropped below the line, we kind of pulled back and haven't done much since then.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
If I could just make two comments on both of those projects. One is that the principal at Concord has indicated that there was interest in community and she was hopeful of getting some grant funds towards that addition. She had some back about a year ago, but we lost them due to fact we could not make matching funds. It's possible if she can find those same dollars available today that we might be able to find enough money within the process, within all of these projects to help fund a portion of that project. Secondly, on the weight room, I'm going to be using facilities, capital dollars, to make the repairs to the floors. We really can't wait to decide what's going to happen with the rest of the addition and all because of the hazard that that presents to both the children, the students, as well as staff. So we are going to go ahead and we're getting bids on that right now to get that work done.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move to 3.4 and this is the Board Budget and Board Training Discussion. Board members, let me know when you're there. I know we have quite a few attachments. I know you've had time to review it. This tells us just a capsulation of all the hours that you've attained as you've been a board member, whether it's prior or returning. And then it's a breakdown in what you have currently for this past fiscal year. And then you have also the budget and what has been used and what is left. This gives us a real good idea of how we'll move forward and what board members would like to be, to participate between now and the end of June. I'm going to begin the discussion on Mr. Shue's side if you have comments or questions regarding the board budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Have no problem with the documents that we have received and reviewed as far as our training credits are concerned. However, I do want to talk a little bit about the board budget proposal that was prepared in January of '09. I wasn't a part of the board at that time and it was the one that Ms. Fertanbaugh had proposed. I don't know if you've all received. had proposed. I don't know if you've all received that. I think you probably did two weeks ago or better. And I've had time to review this and look through it, and I have some suggestions and some disagreements that I wanted to pose to the board for everyone to look to. Does, does everyone have that document available to them? The board budget proposal? Now, we're talking about that, aren't we, Madam Chair?
Any document that you've received, either in a report-
Well, it wasn't listed on the agenda, but it's the-
Does everyone have that? You should have gotten, not with you? Okay.
Okay, well-
Pretty much everyone should remember what was in there. And I know Cindy, you drafted it, so you should know it best of all.
Yeah. Well, on the suggested guidelines, item one was in reference to, I'll just sort of refresh you so that, you know, that you'll know. Item one was where that we were, each board member was to have immediate access up to $1,000 to obtain the 15 hours of credits, which only 12 are required by the state. But I have no problem with that. I have no problem with number two, which is where board members share a car for longer trips or a shared hotel, the expenses would be allocated equally. I think that's fair and reasonable. I can go along with that. Number three, the full board retreat expenses and the credits and all, all that would count separately and not against a thousand, 15 hours for board members. I have no problem with that. On item number four, the way the guideline reads is board members receive a monthly travel stipend and will not expense mileage for trips of 180 miles or less, approximately three hours each way. And even above this threshold, board members are encouraged to use their travel stipend to cover these occasional mileage expenses. I do have a problem with that, Madam Chair. I mean, 180 miles, three hours for us to travel one way.
Yeah.
Now, wait a minute now, I'm not-
I just want to give you a clarification. Since then, we actually cut our travel stipend. We took that away. So that is an item that needs to be revised. We, we actually lowered our board pay.
When, when was that done?
Two budgets ago, I think, we dropped it.
Not even sure, but we need a revised copy of that.
Yeah, but we did take that one.
Well, I mean, I think it's, you know, based on what it, the way that I have it and the way it was presented to me and what we got just two weeks ago, you know, it's unreasonable to expect a board member or anyone to travel three hours at their own expense, you know, for, you know, this type of activity that we're doing. I think it's totally unreasonable. So if you've changed that, then I think that's a good thing. I'd be interested in knowing what the, has it been deleted totally, or?
No, I think what happened is we took it out of our monthly stipend. So none of us were getting the travel or whatever. We weren't getting the extra. Whenever we rolled it all together, I think most of us, we, we lost like $100 a month. And so at that point, then it was like, well, mileage was reimbursable. We didn't officially change that because that wasn't like a policy to adopt.
Right, yes, the guideline.
It was a guideline.
Right, exactly. Well, like I say, I have no problem running all over the county, to the schools, wherever we have to go. I have no problem with that. I don't think any board member does. But when we travel, you know, to like Asheville for the law conference or Raleigh for the School Board Association, or all those type things, you know, gas at three and four dollars a gallon, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but we need to make sure that we're covered on that, you know. So, okay, so I'm good with that. I'll be interested in seeing the change. And then on number five, you may have revised this as well. If, if so, I'm not aware of it. That is, the way it reads, what I have, is when possible, board members are encouraged to limit hotel and meal expenses. Board funds should be maximized on training fees. I agree with the, the funds being maximized for training fees. I do agree with that. But, you know, I think we have a per diem set per day for the breakfast and lunch and dinner, that type thing. And the per diem is set, and it should be that it would be the lesser of the two, you know, the per diem or what the actual meal costs, but no more than that. And so it should read that. And as far as the hotel rooms, they're usually set already by the School Board Association and that type thing. So we don't have anything to do with that except set our reservations. So, you know, that needs to, you know, be clarified a little bit. And if we're going to do actual expense, then it would definitely be, you know, encouragement there to limit those expenses. But if there's a per diem set, then that would be the guideline that we would use. And I think Ms. Klutz can clarify that. We do have a per diem per day. Is that correct?
We do have a per diem for meals per day for our employees.
Okay. And, and like I say, you know, if, you know, I don't remember what it was because we don't use it often enough to remember, but it should be what the actual meal cost or the per diem, whichever is less. So that would be my recommendation, you know, for us to do the guideline on that. Thank you, Ms. Klutz.
Kelly, if you don't mind, if you do mind staying, because I'll have a question. Ms. Mina, do you have any questions regarding-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
You were through. I'm sorry, I apologize. Continue.
Number six, consideration should be given to no more than three board members attending individual school board meeting. I agree with that. It's fine. We ought to be able to share the information that we get when we go. Six, I'm okay with that. The North Carolina School Board, well, it's a little bit, a little bit fuzzy in my mind here because number seven, it says conferences by North Carolina School Board Association, state or organizational appointment or invitation will not count towards the annual individual board member allocation. And it gives a couple of examples, but just like in my case, I'm going to the law conference, which is a North Carolina School Board law conference. And according to what this reads, it would not count toward my annual board member allocation. So that would need to be clarified as well on the guideline. All right. And then on number eight, we're talking about the National School Board Association Conference, where it says each board member should attend no frequently than every three years. And then the years of service on the board will determine the right of refusal to attend the National School Board Annual Conference when they're, on and on. But I feel like, you know, this is just, I'm just throwing stuff out for you guys to consider and for make the changes and make it right, you know, I think. But I would say, though, there's seven of us and only one National School Board Association meeting in a four-year term. I mean, it wouldn't be right, you know, for me to go to one this year. And then if I've been the elder on the board, as Cindy refers to, well, before we brought Grace back on.
Yeah, I'm elder.
But it wouldn't, it would not be fair, you know, for it to be that way. So I would say no more than one National School Board Association Conference in any four-year period, which would be the length of a term. And so I would think we would need to work on that a little bit, too. But for the most part, I, you know, that's just the issues that I wanted to bring to light, and I think that there needs to be some work on that. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, you did, you did your homework on that totally and completely, and I appreciate that. I'm going to take, I'm just going to go down the line. We'll take additional comments. And then actually, if no one else is interested, I'm going to ask that you and Cindy, since she drafted the original and you would like to have the modifications made, if the rest of the board is okay with it, for the two of you to work together and to bring us back what we need to look at at our business meeting. Ms. Mina, any questions or comments?
The only comment I would make is that, and I don't know, from listening to him talk about that, I don't know whether you're actually turning in the actual meal cost or you're getting, say, $10. And then if you don't, if you go out and buy a $2 hamburger, you get to pocket $8. I don't like that idea. So I don't know how, how that's handled. That's my question.
We get a variety of different things. We'll reimburse if they return receipts, and it's less than the per diem, we'll, we'll reimburse receipts. But if they don't return receipts, we'll, we'll pay per diem. But I don't pay more than per diem. So if they, if they want, if they want to take-
If the per diem is 10 and they spend 2, they-
Then I'll, I'll give, if they want to give me receipts and, and take less than per diem, then we'll allow them to take less than per diem.
Well, I would hope they would do that.
People, people do, and that's fine by me.
Ms. Furtinbaugh?
I just, I think Mr. Schu has some good refinements. And you'll notice in there, I carefully used words like suggested and consideration and whatnot, so that it wasn't a hard and fast black and white rule, that there was flexibility. Because perhaps someone would want to go to the law conference, and they weren't able to go to the annual conference. And so the money becomes a wash, you know, so things like that. And certainly with the hotel situation, you're right, it, it is standard rates. That was more, I guess, drawing attention to when there are things close within a reasonable driving distance, you know, perhaps, you know, the hotels are, are available for longer distances because people come from Cherokee and all over the state and, and might need a hotel where maybe if we're within 45 minutes or an hour, whatever, we might not need a hotel. So, so I think there's, there's some good refinements there. Do you want questions overall, or just on that particular item, on these training things?
Regarding our board-
Yeah, the three, the three separate things.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, just on the credit hours, Madam Chair, you and I have both served on the legislative committee. But I don't, normally NCSBA does their own credits, but they give us credits like for FRN, they give us credits for annual conference. But I don't think we've ever had credits for legislative committee.
And actually, I had asked the board clerk, and I think she's looking into it with them to see if we should have, because I felt like there were a couple of things missing too. So she's looking into that, and she may refine that list for us as well.
Okay.
Yeah, at the state level, I thought there were some things missing from the liaison on the legislative, both you and I together. So she's actually looking at it.
Because I had it the one year that I filled in for you on occasion, so.
Absolutely. Okay. Anything else?
No, just that Ms. Monroe, on the hotel for October 2011, for me, you can remove that. I'm requested last night, and my daughter lives nine miles from where I need to be, so I'm going to stay with her.
Madam Chair? I do have one question. Being new, what is that item, China trip? Can somebody explain what that is?
I will let Dr. Shepherd explain that. He knows that verbatim back and forth. Now, it's a great and wonderful opportunity. If the majority of you remember, Ms. Mina, you were on the board when I actually took the trip to Mexico with the Center for International Understanding, my second, maybe third year on the board. So this is with the same organization that gives educational opportunities, and I will hand that off to you.
We had a great honor last Friday night, I guess it was, to sit with representatives from the Jiangsu province of China, where the state of North Carolina has a partnership with Jiangsu, and entertain some of the visitors from there, from our partner schools, our sister schools. And they were traveling here at the expense of the Chinese government and the Hanban and the Center for International Understanding and other groups. And we have been afforded the opportunity through the same organizations to send many of our administrators. Colleen and I have been, Marion, I think Chris is scheduled to go sometime this fall, and others, at, at virtually no expense to the school district. And then two months ago, Mr. Van Hugelmann and I were invited to go to a meeting with, I want to make sure this is correct, the Hayes, Marion Cannon Hayes Foundation.
Chair of Trust.
General Trust.
Chair of Trust.
Who made it available to us for one policymaker in our district and one policymaker in the Kannapla City Schools to also take part in this trip. And so they have agreed to fund the expenses for the trip, and they agreed to do so for the next two years in addition to this year. So this year, the trip being to China. Next year, there might be a trip for a policymaker somewhere else. So I want to say publicly how thankful I am of their willingness to involve board members, policymakers in these trips, because I think our students are reaping the benefits. If you've looked at, at the homepage for our district, and just today, I think that there's an article and a wonderful picture of a young lady who is experiencing our Mandarin Chinese program at Coxmo High School. And that is the result of that partnership. So thanks for giving me a chance to expound on it.
Mr. Fur, comments or questions?
Yeah. Okay, I agree with letting Mr. Schu and Ms. Furtinbaugh take a look at this and come back with some ideas. But I'm not going to make you guys happy, but I said this three years ago, whenever I first got on the board, that I think the stipend that we get paid, which I don't know how the rest of you felt, but I had no idea you got a stipend. So I didn't run for that reason or expecting anything. So I can understand where, when we go to some of the state conventions, and you have to pay to attend that, that it comes out of this money. But I don't think that personally, this is just my opinion, that I think the travel in a motel should come out of the stipend that we get every month. And that's just the way I feel about it.
Now, I want clarification. Are you talking about when we travel outside of Cabarrus County?
Yes.
That you're talking about Raleigh trips and any of the law conference?
Yeah, no, more than we go with the amount of money we get paid, which is not a great deal. I don't want you people to think that we're getting rich. But, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a fair amount that we probably don't use. I mean, we don't deserve that much. And I've made that comment numerous times during my two and a half years, that I don't think, I don't even know why we get one, but, you know, thank you anyway.
It depends on what the board members do. I don't know about you, but I've run the tires off my car with everything I do and everything I do for the board. I mean, if you go with the mileage I put on my car and how many things that I do, I, the, what I actually get for mine, I use it all up in a month's time. It's 30 miles one way, and I can tell you how many times I go into the schools and what we do with the meetings we go to with all the things I do. I pretty much use it up all in gas. I can tell you that. And I can put it on paper for you if you'd like for me to, because I've done it. And I can, I have.
She has, I signed them.
And she signed them, and I can, so I can show you where mine goes. So, but one of the questions I have, by what we have stated right now, now Lynne had mentioned that the law conference should be deducted. Now, are you saying that our conference should be deducted? If you say state meetings, should that be taken off?
No, if I could just give clarification to my original intent, the state meetings where I was talking about were things like when Holly or I served on legislative committee, where that was not actual a training. We were invited to participate. And so that wasn't training. So the intention was things like the law conference, any other conferences held around the state, those would be under, and that just needs to be clarified, I think, those would be under your budget. But if it's an invitation thing, because on occasion, for example, NCSBA will invite different people to come for something in particular. And so if it's an invitation, then it does not count against your money.
Okay, but the law, then, because that's kind of what I, okay.
Yeah. And that was my, my intention is that that did count, because that was individual training. And, and you sign up to go as opposed to being invited by name to participate.
Okay, okay, because that kind of threw me off with that. And that was where I came, had a question on that. And one of the things, and I kind of disagree on one of the things that Lynne had stated, because one of the things like national conferences, I think we should just say, you know, if, if a member, we, because you can learn from the national. We learn from, from the state and the federal. We learn from other people. We learn from actual people that, from other states, other individuals. That's how we learn from each other. And again, voting to, not all of us go, bring things back, I agree. But saying you can only go one time per four years, I, I kind of disagree with that. But saying one people go, that's fine. And two, I would like to mention, I've been on this board five years, and I've never gone to one. And I would like to go to one. That's where I would like to see maybe going. But I agree, I think Lynne and Cindy putting their heads together and bringing something back, that's fine with me.
Mr. Kiger?
Yeah, I'd just like to tell Mr. Schu how much I appreciate him going through that document and bringing those comments up. I, I'm perfectly fine with Ms. Furtinbaugh and Mr. Schu kind of looking at it. That's the perfect example of, you know, you have something that every now and then just needs to be looked at and double-checked and tweaked. But I think what, what Cindy has pointed out of her intentions, I, I agree with. There's certain things that if you got invited specifically at something that was sort of above and beyond that, to me, that is, that does rise to a little different level. But what I've seen just since last December with that budget, it seemed like we kind of did a nice job of parcelling out not too much money to where it's, you know, just a huge budget. But to have something, to be able to go to participate at a little larger level than just here locally, to me, it seemed very fair. And I, I think we did a good job with that. So I'm, I'm okay with continuing on. I think it's perfectly reasonable as an organization for us to have an amount of money that we spend to further ourselves and our education and broaden our horizons, to then be able to bring that experience and expertise back to the district instead of, you know, having to eat it all the time. Because then you might be in a situation where, eh, I kind of want to go, but boy, that's, eh, I don't know. And then you decide not to go. And then that's a detriment to the, both yourself as a board member and the system as a whole. So anyway, that's just some general comments.
Madam Chair, I just want to make a follow-up to Mr. Fur's comment about mileage, that I, I think all board members have fallen into this situation over the years, where we don't file miles for all of our trips to Raleigh. file miles for all of our trips to Raleigh and whatnot, and I use a ratio of about one every four times, where I file the mileage. I think most people do that, you know, there's some, there's some give and take. We carpool to Greensboro and do things like that. So I just don't want to, you know, give anybody an impression that we're kind of nick one dime, because I think we are pretty generous with using our own resources, as Ms. Carpenter said. And the other thing is, I believe now is the registration time for the National School Board Association, so I think, and Lyn, what do we have in there? No more than how many members per year? I don't remember.
You speaking about?
For the, for the national conference. When Dr. Dunlap was here for District Six two weeks ago, I had a chance to talk to him actually about the national conference, and he said, he asked why we didn't have participation. He said ironically, from a state level, we have greater participation in National School Board Association than we get with FRN. Federal relations really dropped off this year because it's in January, February, when the budget crisis was hitting. And he said even some drop-off in some other conferences that they're offering within state and some of the regional things, but he noticed that we had not sent. And I said it really became a matter of where you spent the money. So he's, you know, just extolled the value of, so I think that, you know, anybody who's interested should maybe talk to yourself, and we should get on that for a person or two.
You had it down, Cindy, you had it here in this guideline for up to two Board members.
Okay.
Up to two Board members, but now.
Well, maybe we need to have that conversation, because it's in April or something, isn't it? So maybe we need to have that conversation soon.
And I don't know what the expense for a national conference would be, but obviously it would be considerably more than a North Carolina School Board Conference, you know, because you'd have airline flights and travel and all of that, and, you know, in conjunction with it. So it could be easily two, three, four times that, and I think that's why, Ms. Carpenter, we probably, why I haven't, because I wanted to go on them too, you know, for different reasons, but because of the expense, I didn't. But sometimes, though, I mean, I've learned that, you know, matter of fact, I built my business. I built the business that I owned for 20 years, you know, from gleaning from other people, you know, and if you've got someone that has the interest and has the time to go to the School Board Conferences like that, I think it's invaluable what they can bring back. They will help us and make things work better here for us. And so, you know, I think it's a good thing, but we just still got this, the little guideline on the fund. The funding is just not that good, but we're not, you know, we're not, none of us getting rich doing this start with, you know, and I think that least we can expect is our, you know, just and reasonable expenses for what we spend, and I think that's very, very reasonable.
And Lyn, I want to make sure that you and Blake, since you're new, and I'm not sure even what year we actually did this, but, and Kelly, I hate to put you on the spot, but I don't know what year it was, that we took a decrease. We decreased our Board budget. I was hoping you were looking for that. I wasn't sure what year it was, but we took, we took a significant cut in that Board budget to return it to the General Fund. Do you know exactly how much?
Yeah, Madam Chair, and point out, you know, to Mr. Shu's point about the national conference, we have had the money budgeted, we have not spent it. It has been returned to the General Fund every year. So even in our downsized budget, we've had the amount for two people to go. I think the estimate, Lyn, was roughly, you know, $2,500 max, depending on if it's.
For a person?
Yes. I think we had like $5,000 budgeted of the 13,5 total, which we don't have a huge budget for our training. We don't, you know, we're pretty inexpensive to maintain, considering we have a legislated training requirement. No other elected Board has that in the state.
You stole my line. That's exactly where I was going. We are the only mandated officials that are required by law to maintain, continue and add, so we do not have a choice but to do this. And actually, that's always been the challenge, is making sure that we're doing the most that we can to get those hours in, and that's what I wanted you all to see here, so that you didn't feel pushed, because we've been able to get authorization from the state level to have a lot of things here in Cabarrus County that we get credit for, so that we don't have to travel outside and we don't have to attend all the law conferences. When I first got on the Board, we didn't have a lot of things local. So, you know, with the retreats that we've put in place and the strategic planning process, and some of the things that we're actually able to obtain hours for, that's been a huge help for us, so that we haven't been able, and there was one year that we actually used the complete Board budget. We still have three-quarters of this Board budget left. So my point is, and that was the reason for having the discussion, I got also asked by the state why we were not participating in more outside-of-the-box areas, like the national conferences and the things that, you know, they want to hear from us. We've done some really good things in Cabarrus County, you know, that we're proud of, and we need to hear from them. So that was the whole reason to have the discussion tonight, so that we can decide what needs to be tweaked or modified. All of us continue to move in the same direction and to figure out if that money is sufficient, if it's too much, which, Kelly, you've returned probably, what, for the last two years, what we've had left back to the General Fund. I'll let you take that, that'll be your line.
Absolutely. Fiscal year 2010 is when you took the reduction, and it was about $113 per Board member. That's from your salary. And then also, I also take the excess, yeah, that's per month, $113 per Board member per month that we return, and then I also take the excess that you leave me in your staff development account. Yes.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I got one comment.
Okay. Mr. Fur, I'll recognize you.
Not to anger you guys anymore, but, you know, we did run for this position. We knew what we were getting into. Nobody, except Ms. Monroe, you got a point at this time, but we all knew what we were getting into, and that's why I have a problem with even discussing sometimes the finances.
Mr. Kiger.
I'm going to give him a little help on that one, because I remember when I ran for the School Board the first time, I had no idea you even got paid, so.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Monroe. I didn't even know that, didn't even have anything to do with it, you know, but anyway, what I wanted to say in reference to the training hours, Madam Chair, that we've been able to accumulate for things that we have done locally, that's a good thing, but the downside to that is, and just for whatever it's worth, you know, there's over 100 districts in North Carolina, and if every district in North Carolina had done what we're doing, then the North Carolina School Board Association, which is, you know, basically our spokesperson and our lobbyist in Raleigh, we would definitely be in a pretty bad fix. And so I'm hoping that we don't have to do this all of the time, and I'm hoping that things will get better, where we can participate in North Carolina School Board Associational meetings to further their cause, which in turn furthers what we do as ones on the Board and for the education as a whole. But I can see that it would be very detrimental if ever a School Board does what we're doing, because it would hurt us on a state level.
And Madam Chair, not to stow your thunder again, because you probably have this on your list too, but based on our, our credits are based on fiscal year, school year, so our 2010, 2011, even with the change in Board members, we will achieve, because that was through the election cycle, we will achieve the Board certificate status at the Annual Conference. Our minimum number of credits was 26, and I think we only needed, what, was it 12 or 15, to get recognized. And there, of the 115 districts, typically, there's 15 or less districts that get recognized for their diligence with training, and we will get.
And, you know, that may not speak to a lot of anything that anybody knows a lot about, except us, but it does state that we take our job very seriously, and that we are out there advocating for educating for Cabarrus County schools to, you know, get up to par with what's going on and to stay up to speed with laws and regulations that we're all legally liable for. So, you know, there is a huge part of this that plays a big role in what decisions we make, you know, when we take votes, when we approve policies, and we need to make sure that during these law conferences, we know what the laws really are, and that we are up to speed. So a lot of this is not just because we're there for the, you know, when we all are very interested, but because we have to be. We have to be proactive in the decisions that we make, and they're very serious. They impact our kids every day. So with that being said, that was the one reason why. I just wanted to make sure that we move forward. If everyone is okay with allowing Cindy and Lyn to look at this again and to bring it back to us at our business meeting, I'll actually put this on action versus consent, if you're good.
Yes, absolutely.
Is that good? Sure.
One comment I want to make, too. A lot of times, we can get free hours, and I'm always going after the free hours. You'll notice that in the year, the prior year, you'll notice that I did have quite a few hours, and a lot of those I got at no cost at all to us with some of our things that our system actually offered, like our tech camp, which was offered through, which I go to each year, which I enjoy tremendously. And when we were offering things, and which we got credit for, so, and one time, we had something that was offered through Head Start, when they offer something through the state. So whenever I can get it at no cost, I always try to do that, too. So I always try to get it that way.
Absolutely, and I sign those forms for you, so I understand that. Thank you very much, Ms. Carpenter, for bringing that to our attention. Okay, Board members, we are going to X out of that. Does anyone have any trouble? I had just a slight bit of trouble coming out of that. Is anyone, is everyone okay? We are going to move to the discussion items for approval at the business meeting on October the 10th, so we'll begin with 4.1. We'll have Ms. Kelly Klutz back to the podium. This is the approval of the budget amendments. Let me know when you're there. Everyone good? Ms. Klutz?
We have two budget amendments for your review tonight. One would be, we need to reclass and move the dollars so that we can video and present your Board meetings, and so you'll see that in your local budget amendment there. That's your first one. That's a reclass. And the second budget amendment that you have is one that we talked about last Board meeting. It is the grant we received for the dishwasher at Wolf Meadow, $23,000. Are there any questions?
Board members, comments or questions? I hear, see a shake of a head. No, everyone good? And is that good for the consent agenda?
Yes.
I hear all yeses. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Klutz. And bear with me, because I'm having a slow movement here. Okay, thank you. Next, we will have 4.2, the approval of athletic directors as assistant coaches, and we'll have Mrs. Donna Smith and Mr. Gallagher, Callum Mary, to the podium, please. Thank you very much. 4.2, Board members, let me know when you're there. Everybody there? Okay.
Much of what we're going to be doing tonight is actually discussing, and it's my pleasure that Gary is with me tonight, because I think this is the first time he's been before the Board since he came on as our system athletic director. We'd like to begin this by pointing out that the reason we are here is we've been approached for a waiver of the decision that the Board made in June of 2007. In June of 2007, the Board of Education made the decision at that time that athletic directors are not allowed to coach. We truly view this decision as a very sound decision, because it has promoted consistency in operations from school to school, and the athletic director has been able to direct full energies through the entire sports program at the school and regard individual sports in a fair and equitable manner. At the same time, we realize situations do arise, and I'd like to point out a couple of the things that we've noticed. There are sometimes some difficulties in filling a particular vacancy. The other thing is sometimes we have a coach that will actually resign after a team has been formed, and there you're stuck in a situation without a coach. And so periodically, we find ourselves a bit against the wall, if we could put it that way, in that the athletic director sometimes has to temporarily move into a position until we can secure a coach in those rare instances like that. The other situation is we do have some schools who have assistant athletic directors, while we have others who do not. That's been an individual school decision on that. And this year, Gary and I are working on a department improvement plan for athletics, and our plan is really spending a lot of time looking at the hiring process, the training process, and the retention for coaches, at both the middle and the high school levels. And in fact, I think this gives us an opportunity to thank the Board for the decision that you were able to help us with in approaching hourly paid employees with coaching openings as long as their job was uniquely different from the coaching position we were looking at. We're also looking in this department improvement plan on awareness, because we realize quite often there are openings in coaching positions that folks may be unaware of. So time is being taken to look at, how are we advertising those positions within the school, within the district, and also perhaps within the state, if that's where we need to look, even though we recognize that we are really working hard trying to name coaches locally, because we feel like that's a better impact for the school. The other piece, part of the improvement plan, is that the guidelines that we're developing, we're wanting to make sure those are written and also placed in the Athletic Handbook, so that we continue to refer back as questions come. So with the idea that we've been approached for a waiver tonight, as we look at that, if we'd like to make a recommendation that if this proposal is viewed favorably by the Board of Education, we would ask that you designate Dr. Shepherd or Dr. Shepherd's designee to oversee the development of some administrative guidelines for this process. The decision of yes or no to this proposal, without the benefit of guidelines, we think could lead to some implementation flaws, or maybe even poor implementation. So outlining tonight what we're talking about is that there are times where a principal has difficulty in filling a coaching position. And in looking at this, what we would like to propose is that the principal is accountable for every decision, because not allowing athletic directors to coach continues to be the soundest practice that we feel like should follow. We also feel like the principal and the athletic director should exhaust all avenues to fill any open positions and be able to document the process that they have followed. We also perceive that the athletic director may serve only as an assistant coach in only one sport and one school calendar year. The school principal would be responsible for naming an assistant athletic director to oversee activities while the athletic director is involved in the coaching aspect of the sport. And then the financial responsibility for the stipend of an assistant athletic director would belong to outside resources. That may be the boosters club, it may be fundraising efforts on the part of the school, as well as banner sponsors, et cetera. And the reason we're bringing all of these specifics to you tonight, again, is that we have been approached for a waiver, and based on the Board decision in 2007, we do not have that authority to look for a waiver. And yet, in producing this, we wanted to make sure that we're very wise about the recommendation we made, because the Board made that decision in a wise manner at that time in 2007. So that's the proposal we present to you tonight, with the added piece that we would like to make sure that if that is the direction the Board goes, that we do work toward administrative guidelines under the Development Superintendent.
Okay, and I'll open the floor for discussion, and I'll begin with Mr. Kiger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quick question, the limitation is only such that it can be an assistant and only for one sport in a calendar year?
Yes.
Okay, there's no other limitation, the actual sport's not limited, it can be any sport, as long as it's only one?
Correct. We're staying away from the head coaches because of the added responsibilities that they do have.
Mm-hmm.
You know, being an athletic director takes a lot of time, and I think they have those three periods during the day that they can get a lot of their work done. But being a head coach, it's much more involved. You know, they're going to wind up doing all the eligibility. They're going to make, they have to make sure all the forms are in and all that. Assistants are just as important, but the time, the time that is spent doing a lot of the paperwork and all of that, it's just not, not the same.
Okay, okay, well.
I would not like to see head coaches.
Yeah, I guess that's where I was going. I like the separation. I think there's something to be said for somebody that's responsible at looking at something well above and looking at the program or department as a whole, as opposed to down here at the individual sport level. But I certainly can empathize with being in a bind. So I guess I'm inclined to have that flexibility, if it goes beyond the athletic department of this particular school, and in this case, it sounds like between you guys and Dr. Shepherd's designee, that that would then be that oversight. And I clearly think you're on the right path of not being a head coach. To me, I just, I couldn't support that, but if it's an assistant coach only, and it truly, if they follow the guideline that you said, that it's after exhausting all other avenues, then I'm okay, because if we hold fast and firm, and they've done that, well, then we're just setting up something to be difficult. But if they haven't followed that path, and it's just a fallback position, well, you know, then I guess that gives me a little bit of unease. But I guess, at the end of the day, that's up to you and Dr. Shepherd to monitor and make sure that that piece of it's been taken care of.
I think, I think you have to realize, too, that one of the main things about with coaching, if we can keep most of our coaches in the building, coaching instead of going to the outside, now, we've had success with people that are in the outside, that are non-faculty and that are paid. But just, just these two months, we've lost two people. So those athletic directors have had to find somebody else, because they're not committed to the school. They came in thinking it was going to be a cakewalk until they had to deal with situations such as parents, the kids, schedules, and so forth. So we're trying to keep everybody in-house, if we can, and this is an opportunity that we can have somebody that, because all of our athletic we can have somebody that, because all of our athletic directors have coached at one time. They know, they know the routine. They need, they need, these kids need to go to people that are in the building if they need help with their academics, if they, if they go to that person. It's just like any other coach. If a kid has a problem in a class, they're going to go to their coach and they're going to try to iron that thing out. And if the kid has to stay extra after school to bring his grades up, so be it. You know, some of the non-faculty people, they don't get the whole picture. And that's where I think we wind up having problems. The more and more that we can keep our people in our building, the coaching, and it's tough because, you know, with the reduction of force, with the budgets and all that, you know, you're going to get fewer and fewer people because you're going to start losing faculty from those, from the different staffs.
Right. Well, as far as being in-house or out-of-house, I just trust that whoever the best person is to administer the coaching duties for that particular sport, I happen to know of two that are out-of-house, and one, she's a college student coaching JV volleyball at Cox Mill, and she's getting more out of it probably than the kids are. I mean, she's thrilled to death in having a gr- I mean, it's, you know, I've talked to the principal, and it, so, but I understand exactly what you mean, that when they're around during the day, I'm sure that's much better for the, for the athletes. But it does, it cuts both ways. There are situations where somebody outside does a tremendous job. So anyway, thank you.
Am I, am I on? Okay. Well, one of the things had there on this proposal, did you take a vote of the A.D.s?
I took a vote from the principals. Five are in favor as long as they have something to say about it along with the superintendent.
What about the A.D.s?
Uh, there's only one or two that might want to get back into it.
We did not poll the A.D.s until we knew the direction of the board.
I just wonder, because last time, didn't you poll the A.D.s?
In 2007, I'm not sure what-
I thought they did.
He was an A.D. in 2007.
I was an, I was an A.D. at the time.
Yeah, Mr. Calamary, did you get polled?
Did you get polled? Because I thought they did.
No, I don't remember being polled.
But I was thinking they did because really, because I was in favor of what we did at that time.
Let me explain there why we opted to poll the principals because the procedure that we're looking for with the driver in this seat would be the principal. And that's ultimately why we decided at this point to poll them in lieu of athletic directors. Does that make sense?
Because one of the reasons, because what we heard at that time, because I was on the board at that time and I agreed with it because we heard that the A.D.s were having so much trouble because we did have a few that were coaching at that time, and it was spreading them out so much, they were going so many different ways, and this way they could concentrate on what they needed to concentrate on, and that that was the best thing to do, and they could concentrate on what they were designed to do, and we could put them back in the classroom and to teach. And down here in these guidelines, you're not saying anything about the teaching. Are they still going to teach if they do that?
They're to teach at least one period.
That's, that's still required. Uh, because again, I don't want them to feel like, and again, don't want you to feel like that we're trying to ask too much of you to do this. We, you know, because right now, it sounds like everything's going like it needs to be going. And I want to make sure that that stays in place, that you're able to do what you need to do, and that we're not asking too much. And I want to make sure that that stays in place.
We're not going to force them to coach. That would be, you know, their, their opportunity if they wanted to get back into the coaching after they exhausted all of the other avenues, that they could not find people to coach in their building. But it still would have to be approved by their principal and the superintendent or his designee. Um, you know, there's some people that just want, just might just stay, stay as an athletic director. There are some people that might just need to stay as an athletic director with the recommendation from their principal. Um, you know, we're just, we're just trying to find other avenues so that we can fill some of these coaching positions.
Even if it's just on a temporary basis until they're able to do it? Because right now, per our policy, they're not allowed to do that even on a temporary basis if they should need to for some type of injury or accident to one of the coaches. Okay.
Honestly, back in 2007, when they told me that I couldn't be an assistant anymore, at that time, I felt, well, maybe it is time to get out. Um, you know, because I had been doing it for 27 years, so.
Okay.
Oh, man. I'll be short. Uh, of course, I'm in favor of, I mean, the decision made in 2007, I'm sure at that time was a good decision. A lot of things have changed since then. First of all, these coaches and teachers, they probably haven't had a pay raise since 2007. So it's hard to get people in, in coaching. I mean, you look at overall, in the state, there's a big time shortage of coaches. A lot of us got to do, it's kind of like being a board member. You know, if you, you don't coach for money. I mean, I don't think there's a coach out there, I mean, it's part of what they do. If you're doing it for money, you're in it for the wrong reasons. They spend a lot of, lot of time. And I think it's, I go along with it being a principal recommendation with the superintendent making approval. The principals know better than anyone, better than anyone in administrative offices, better than anyone up here on this board, what their school needs are, what their personnel's like, if their, if their A.D.'s capable. Because I know there's some that's not capable of doing both, and their principals know that. They're not going to make bad decisions on this. I think it'd be very few, but I also think it's something that's needed. And I know Mr. Calamary was a, was a good high school coach, and he had to make that choice five years ago, along with other, other people. He made a choice to go on an A.D. I know some that wanted to stay in coaching their sport. So, uh, I know it's worked, but also know that it has been very difficult in finding qualified people. And like you said, keeping them in the classroom is, or closer to school. You know, you take a kid on the JV level that may have practice at 5:00, they don't, they can't go home and come back. So they're at the school. And it's good to have someone within the school still there with them to kind of oversee. But if you've got someone from the outside, they don't get off work till 4:30, they can't really have a full control of what's going on. But I'm in favor of the recommendation, but only with the superintendents. We pay him quite well to do his job, and this is one of the deals where the superintendent, the principals need to do their job, and the school board needs to stay out.
Y'all know of an opinion on this. But first, I will say that I do support the recommendation, obviously, there's a caveat on one of the lines, but I do support the recommendation that this be a principal recommendation to the superintendent, not the superintendent's designee, though. I think you need to make that call and not, um, there was a mention earlier on, the superintendent or designee. I think it needs to be superintendent's call, if that's, if it's an acceptable situation or not, and that all avenues have been reviewed.
And that recommendation is the administrative guidelines to get to this process only for the designee?
Yeah. Or it says, or designee?
What I was mentioning earlier was actually, we'd like to designate superintendent, superintendent's designee to oversee the development of administrative guidelines.
Okay, and that's fine for the development of it, but I think when it comes to a decision on why the A.D. is going to do something more than a sick leave coach kind of thing, I don't think they need any permission to cover someone, God forbid, being in a car accident or anything emergency like that. I think that just happens. But I do have some other food for thought for y'all. First of all, we only received the update two weeks ago that support staff would be okay, as you mentioned, in a non-related teaching or support position, that they could go ahead and be a coach as well. So I think we need to give that some time. I think there needs to be perhaps more advertisement of coach positions. I don't believe they're posted today. I think it's mostly an internal word of mouth. Is that true?
Uh, it's on the, it's on the state website. If you go to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association website, it's on that. We are, we have also sat down with, I've sat down with Paige Gentry, and it's going to be put on our, the school system website also. We're going to include that with human resources.
No, well, and that's good because there may be people looking locally for something. And I'm going to give you a real example. About seven years ago, when my daughter was running cross, not cross country, but track for Northwest Cabarrus High School, the coach just communicated with parents by way of email, just sent out an all-call-type email, anybody interested in being a volunteer coach because it's a no-cut sport, and they need more bodies just to supervise 100 and some kids that normally go out for track at Northwest. Well, I could not do that and was not interested in doing that. My neighbor's daughter had graduated from Northwest, run track and cross country. He himself was an avid runner, and he was at the point in his life where I thought, this is right up David's alley. I sent it to him, and I'm happy to say that after seven years, he is still an assistant volunteer coach for cross country and track, absolutely loves it. It turns out, the coach and this gentleman knew each other through church in a preschool situation and whatnot. So you'd never know where you're going to find valuable even assistant coaches. So I think, you know, we need to leave no stone unturned. Communicate, have it posted locally, that's a great idea. The, and just to go over some, some old things, you know, I'm concerned about somebody wanting to coach when we had, and Gary, you're aware of this, we had extensive information presented to us why they could not teach two, two classes per semester. And so when I look at all the rationale for supporting that decision to say only one class each semester, relatively no planning because most of the A.D.s were P.E.-type coaches, so they didn't have a lot of planning time. So in essence, had three-quarters of their day to be an A.D., plus their stipend for other hours. Like I said, so I don't know how they can fit in coaching, and I understand this request is for a basketball coach, which is a significantly time-consuming sport because when you get in season, you're looking at at least two games a week, sometimes three. I don't know how that is going to be managed. As a mother of two female athletes in the past, I don't know how A.D.s can provide equal support to all teams. Quite honestly, they don't do it today. So how can they do it if they're in, at the practice venue for whichever sport, and who is going to do the other work? So you're saying have the boosters club pay a stipend. There's an issue with that. If the A.D., assistant A.D. must remain objective with regard to booster club pressures, and I'm sure you're familiar with this, having been in that position at a high school, booster club pressures, there are typically in booster clubs, a handful of parents who contribute more time and money than others, and I've heard the conversations myself, expect their children to have maybe a little more special attention and playtime. So how, as an A.D., if you're then the coach, and somebody's getting a stipend from the boosters club, can you remain objective and, like I said, treat all of this, all of the teams equally? And Dawn, I'll challenge you from the gender equity Title IX standpoint, can you really remain, remain fair and equitable? If a person, an A.D. or even assistant A.D., is receiving a stipend from a school for one activity than they're receiving a stipend from the boosters club for another activity, to me, that constitutes a part-time job.
Now, I need to clarify what you just said. I may just misunderstood. Now, this states that the financial responsibility for the stipend of an assistant athletic director only if that position actually takes place would belong to the booster club, not for the A.D.
Right. But that assistant A.D. could themselves be a coach for another sport, right? Because they're not bound by this requirement because they're not getting the free periods.
They usually are not an assistant when they're in season because of that extra load that they have.
So in other words, if they had an assistant athletic director going on-
There would be somebody that's not in season.
That's not going to be coaching anywhere else.
Right, because they're going to be, they're going to be needed to, for supervision.
So that would be a moot point.
Okay. No, but except, the A.D. can only coach because the booster club is paying for somebody to take their place. And they're going to get their, I'm guessing they would get their basketball or football or whatever stipend, is that correct? So the A.D.'s still getting, that's why I asked for the stipend list. The A.D. is still getting the full stipend, but now they have a pocket of time that is carved out that is no longer available to be A.D. under that stipend. So do they get paid twice for the same after-school work for practices? I think we have an issue of, you know, other staff members who may have little part-time jobs that can be accomplished at school, and I'm sure there are many out there who have not gotten caught, so to speak, but there are some who have been caught for doing things they shouldn't be doing with their businesses at school. So how do we hold a case to that situation if an A.D. is being paid, they're full A.D. stipend, and then they're getting their basketball or whatever assistant coach stipend? And it's kind of like the part-time gig on top of the full-time gig, and they're getting money for the same time, unless the stipend is subtracted out or they don't claim an assistant coach stipend?
And may I interrupt for just a moment because that's what Dr. Shepherd, I think, was going to actually place on the table that during that time, that the athletic director, if they were being pulled, would not be able to get both. The A.D. stipend while they were actually doing the coaching position, and I think that's what you were going to actually take into consideration when you had to make that decision, if and when it happened.
Yes, ma'am. I would assume that we would be backing out portion of the pay for the athletic director because they're, they're not directing athletics during that portion of time and then adding back some value of an assistant coach's supplement, which I assume the total would be less than the total of the athletic director's salary. So I think to accept this responsibility to move away from athletic director and into their coaching position, you would actually be diminishing the compensation.
Well, and I think if they do that, I guess I'm okay with them keeping the A.D. They just can't get a second stipend for not delivering work on the first job. They can't get a stipend for job two. I'm okay if they keep the higher stipend rate, but they can't get two.
I see.
Does that make sense?
You can get paid twice.
You can't get paid twice for the same thing. I mean, they're already getting the full teacher's salary for teaching two out of six periods that the regular teacher teaches. Okay? So we say the A.D. job is that intensive, they need all that time. Understand? We all agree to that. But now you can't say in the same after-school hours that I'm going to get an assistant coach stipend and I'm going to get an A.D. stipend for the exact same time. I mean, I don't get paid twice in my job for the exact same hours I put in. I'd like to, but I don't. From my understanding, this specific request is for what was termed to me as an assistant coach for men's basketball. However, when I look in our list of coaching stipends and coaching positions, we do not have an assistant basketball coach. We only have assistants in football, wrestling, track, and cross country.
Okay. That would be, would be considered just as a JV coach?
Okay, then that makes them a head coach. So I think you need to work on how you're going to handle that because if they're a head JV coach, they're not an assistant coach, call it what it is, they're a head JV coach. If they're, or change, change your list. I'm just using the, I didn't make this up. I'm using the information we got, right?
It's terminology.
Well, and then the other question is, with basketball, if they're an assistant coach to varsity basketball, makes them head coach, which means they're consumed for even longer for two teams' worth during that season, and basketball in particular, as I mentioned before, is one of the most time-intensive seasons because of the schedules. It's a, it's a, how many games, Gary?
They'll, they'll play an average of 22. The one thing that we had talked about was that, you know, some of the basketball coaches, the head basketball coaches want their assistants or their JV coach to sit on a bench, and we wouldn't permit that because they have the responsibility, their, their main job is to be an A.D. Okay? And they would, they, that's where I felt that with the stipend that they, that they're getting, they still are responsible for supervision. You know, the supervision's not going to be just turned all off and that they're just going to be coaching basketball. They still would be doing twofold job. They would be coaching basketball, and they would still be responsible for that supervision, especially when they're home. You know, because the assistant A.D.'s not going to be able to do it with the administration themselves.
But with the head JV coach, he or she as the A.D. cannot leave their field of play during that game if there is an issue. And I'll give you, this, and this is not basketball, but Mr. Fur and I were up watching a Northwest Cabarrus High School girls' softball playoff game together with Ms. Reimer, and the athletic director had come over. We're all standing up on the hill chatting. Well, wasn't long, the athletic director came over and said, we have an issue up at the school. On that particular day, they had athletic activities on the softball field, on the baseball field, and on the, in the football stadium, women's soccer. And they had a situation with a student who was on suspension, had showed up at the front of the school, was on campus. And so if the A.D. had been an assistant coach to any one of those venues, would not have been available to deal with a possible confrontational situation that had to remove a student from campus. So I don't know how they can coach. I think you either declare for that season, you're the A.D. or you're, you know, in the after-school hours. or you're, you know, in the after-school hours. You can still do all your planning because you're obviously going to know what's going on with the schedules and everything. But in the after-school hours, how can you be a coach in the gym practicing? You're possibly the only adult supervision with the JV team, with things they might be doing. And then at the games, you're the only adult supervision for them. How do you, how can you be AD?
You're still going to have your assistant athletic director that's going to be there for supervision while that coach is coaching the basketball team.
Right, but my point is they can't get two stipends. They can keep their AD stipend. If they want to spend part of that time coaching, then that's Dr. Shepherd's decision. But I, I don't see how they can get two stipends.
You done?
Yeah.
Okay. No, you know, like the situation you're talking about at Northwest, where the AD brought it to the principal's attention, which is what he should have done. The, you know, the principal dealt with it, not, not the AD. The principal left and went and dealt with a student that was suspended, that was on school grounds, that had nothing to do with athletics. So the AD was really, it didn't matter. Now, second of all, you're talking about JV basketball. You're gonna, his game's gonna, he'll be in control of, he'll be doing his AD duties, I'm sure, from time school's out to his game will start about five o'clock and his game will end about 6:15. So you're talking on game days about an hour and 15 minutes, hour and a half, where he's doing coaching and, and not doing AD job. And then after he gets through coaching at 6:15, he will be the AD until 9:30 that night.
Correct.
Correct?
That's what we're looking at.
Yeah, so.
Now, there, there will be situations that they'll have leeway games.
Yep.
But that's where your assistant athletic director will come in for the supervision with your principal and your, your other administrators.
And just like right now, if you have a track meet going on, you have a baseball game going on, girl softball game going on, soccer going on, your AD's not at all for venues. He has help, correct?
Correct.
Right now. Okay, just want to make sure that that's understood, that, that you, you have to have, you have to have help anyway. Because there's so much activity going on. You usually have administrative people from the school at each location, a lot of times, taking care of what's going on.
Yeah, just to clarify, Mr. Fur, all high school principals are not created equal. They are not all at these venues. And sometimes the AD is the administrator. And that's happened for real. They are the administrator on duty. So if they're coaching, all of a sudden you've got now the assistant athletic director, who's the administrator on duty, who is a regular teacher and actually not in that higher leadership role than an AD is. So, but just to summarize my, my two points. No double pay. They can keep the higher AD stipend, but no double pay. And that all, any substitute has to be school system paid. I don't like the idea of people making decisions on sports and being beholden to an outside source for pay.
And I will continue down the line. But I would also ask, if that situation happened, would the SRO not have been involved in some type of confrontational situation there? I would think that would have been their primary role.
It just depends upon the, what contest you have going on for the day. I know that we would, we would always have myself, an administrator, minimum two, the, the two of us, depending upon, like I said, if it was, if we had to get a deputy and all that for on duty.
I would just thought with that type of situation, if it was going to become confrontational, that person would have been brought in versus the principal or anybody else. But I will begin with Ms. Monnet. Yeah, continue down the line, comments or questions?
I'm going to go down a different avenue here. I heard it said that the athletic director teaches two classes.
They teach one.
They teach one, one class.
One each semester.
Okay. What hap, will there be, my, my concern is if someone begins to have excess responsibilities over what they're normally doing, I'm concerned about the youngsters that are in whatever class they're teaching that they're trying to educate. I love athletics, but you will hear me say this over and over. In my book, they're, they come after our first duty, which is educating the children. And I'm amazed that they only teach one class. Why, what is, what are they doing during the rest of the day that requires that much focus?
They deal with mowing grass, sweeping grass, painting lines, helping the coaches out with their facilities. Because each of the, each of the coaches are responsible for their facilities. So someone has to take care of it.
So the system doesn't look after the facilities, the coaches look after it.
No, they'll cut the grass outside of the, the athletic fields.
And the state regulation is that they teach one class? What is the state regulation?
No, it's not a state regulation. It's, it's something that the, the board was gracious to just allow them to teach the one class so that they could, so that they could take care of all the other responsibilities, setting up their bus trips.
Are they hired as classroom teachers? Are they, are they paid through the state as classroom teachers?
Mm-hmm.
But they, are, what I'm hearing is they're not classroom teachers.
No, they are cla, the athletic directors are classroom teachers. They just teach one class each semester.
And would get, okay. I have a problem with that. If, if the athletic director is called upon to do this extra activity in, in, he, he would relinquish his athletic director duties to the assistant athletic director for that time period?
Just for, just for game supervision.
So during the day, the things that he's been doing all, every day, continue?
He, he needs to continue.
And then on top of that, he has these other responsibilities of coaching.
For running a practice and games, yes.
My concern is, would that not eat into his preparation for this one class? I mean, how, what's the possibility that the children in the class he's teaching are going to?
He still has that time during the day that he can do that along with his athletic director's duties.
And that's why it's left with the principal to make that decision with the discretion? Because if an athletic director cannot do that, then they would.
Okay, I'm just going on record that I think we put entirely too much focus on, on the athletic part and not enough on our hiring a classroom teacher who will teach classroom.
She always calls me Mr. Fur. I declare, that's all right. Madam Chair, what I, what I wanted to say was, with all due respect to the board that made the decision in '07, which I was a part of, I was one of the ones that felt like that the superintendent and the principal should have the, the flexibility. And I still feel that way. I mean, I didn't know that I voted that way until the research proved that I did. But I had already told Mr. Fur, before we even knew about how I voted in '07, I still stand the same way. And I feel like that, you know, the principal is responsible for the school, for everything else. And he reports to the superintendent. And I feel like the comments that Cindy made have a lot of weight. I don't think they should draw two stipends, the higher of the two, but not one. I mean, not two, the higher of the two. And then I think the superintendent, not a designee, should be the one to make the decision along with the principal. Because, you know, you could designate somebody way on down. It may not be of an importance to you, but it is important to the board, though, that it would be your decision along with the principal. And I would not want to see this, something that was overused. This is, what we, what we have before us here is a request basically for a waiver for one school, is that right?
Correct.
So, so I'm not, I'm, I'm assuming this is not something that we're going to be hearing about in all of our schools just because and if we approve this situation here. But I do think that there, you know, there needs to be flexibility. And I'm not going to drag it out because there was a lot of good comments made. Everything had a lot of merit. But the bottom line is, is superintendent and the principal are the ones that's responsible. We hold them accountable and it's up to them to, to make sure it's done right. We're not to micromanage, we're just to see to it that it's done right. At least seven heads think it's done right. Or at least four of the seven, anyway. But, but anyway, that's just what I have to say about it. I'm supportive of the waiver.
Okay, so therefore, I'm going to ask for consensus to be added to the consent agenda first. And if that's not sufficient, we'll move to action. Do I hear consensus that we move to make this an administrative guideline with the superintendents, not a designee decision to work with the principal with the modifications that Ms. Burtonbaugh has added? Do I have a consensus to add that to the consent agenda?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to see it on action because I'd like to see it rewritten in the clarification on assistant coaches versus what's in the documentation of assistant. Because I think that needs to be worked out. Otherwise, you've excluded the ability to do an assistant basketball coach.
Hearing one, I will actually put it on the consent, or the action agenda, no matter what. Okay.
Can I ask Mr. Calamary a question? Give us a general idea, what is a stipend for an assistant basketball coach or assisting any coach? 1,500 bucks?
Your JV coach is, starts at the, the COO at the top of your scale there is $902.
That's what, okay.
All right.
So they're not getting paid.
Just to depend upon what, what level, what grade they are at for years' experience. The top, the top of the guide there is 21, 21, 22.
My suggestion is whoever's the assistant AD gets the stipend of the coaching position being filled and the AD retains his or her AD stipend. And then you don't have any money issues, no booster club involvement. You just simply take whatever that coaching stipend is. That's, that's the value of the time. It's not much, but it is what it is. That's the value of the time that is attributed to that particular coaching position. And so therefore, that's the money available for the fill-in for the assistant AD.
I see smiles on that side, that's good.
I think it's giving us some clear direction and that's what we're seeking.
Good, okay. So do you feel comfortable bringing that back to the business meeting? Okay.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, I like that. Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And actually, right now, board members, we need to take just a small recess to allow the cameramen to change their tapes. So if you'd like to take a five-minute recess, we'll do that right now. Okay, thank you, that short break. And we will begin with 4.3. This is the approval of the school improvement plans. And I'm going to ask Mr. Matthew Fell, I had spoken with him earlier, that we just go ahead and place this on the action agenda. If you absolutely have a critical question tonight, but there are some that had problems working with their thumb drives and accessing all the information. We have 39 school improvement plans that have been presented in less than a week. So that's been very intensive. If you're okay with that, we'll just go ahead and place it on the action. That'll give you one more week to view all the different school improvement plans. Is that good? Everyone okay with that?
I'm really disappointed.
Ah, if you're disappointed, you can start the discussion. Can you please bring them next Monday night? Unless you have something critical for tonight that you would like Mr. Fell to be working on between now and then.
I'll make my notes. I, I did tell him, one of the things, and I did mention it to him, and he had, and if it's okay with the board, the assurance form was, was what I brought up to him. And he just wanted to kind of get direction, and if it's okay with the board. He said that this form, that was really nothing that the DIP requested. And, and, and I went through all of the schools, every one of them. And I put notes.
And I want to let the general public know that you were in Florida while you actually were able to do that, while the rest of us were here working.
No, 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 I did this after I got home. I've worked two and a half days on this.
I'm giving you a hard time, it's okay.
I was home when I did this.
Mr. Fell, would you like to answer that question? Or would you like to defer to Monday night and I will leave that up to you?
Well, Carolyn did talk to me about that, which I'm grateful. However, the, what I need the board to decide, and one of the processes that I've been really working on with this new school improvement planning process is trying to ensure that we get commitment and buy-in, that it is not seen as a compliance document, although we do need to comply with the law. The law portion does require you to approve the school improvement plans. And what they're primarily asking you to approve are the goals and the strategies that the school has adopted. Those are in the PDCA or Plan Do Check Act documents that you have on your thumb drives. As Carolyn noted, there are missing pieces on some of these schools' assurances sheets. I do consider that to be important and will be following up with those schools. So the direction I need from the board is, do you want me to follow up and give you a report later when I've got all that sort of tucked neatly?
I'll take a point of privilege and say yes.
Or tell them they have to get it to me by Thursday so I can give it to you before Monday.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Is everyone good for that? Good, okay.
Only thing I would like to say, though, I want to compliment all the schools because like that assurance that I went through every one of them. And they did a wonderful job. And the information on that is, and why I would like to see that is because that would help them getting grants because the demographics, the information on that, it was great. And they did take a lot of time and I know they put a lot of time into it. And so I want to thank all the schools for all the time they have taken. And I went through some of the other forms. And like I say, I took two and a half days. And I know that they put a lot of time and effort. And I want to thank all the schools and all the administrations in all the time and effort that they put into it.
Well, thank you. They have worked very hard. And it's a new process, it's an exciting process, but it is not easier than it was before. So I do hope that you will extend them a certain amount of leeway as we build and grow in this model without applying just enough pressure to grow and not enough to send us over the edge.
Right, super. Is everyone okay with that? It's all well. And thank you, Ms. Carpenter, for doing your due diligence.
Yes.
Next, we will move to 4.4, which is the approval of the district strategic plan. And we will keep Mr. Matthew Fell.
Okay. First, I want to commend the work of the Board of Education on the draft of the 2011-2014 strategic plan. This plan, I believe, truly reflects the results of the community forums, which demonstrates your willingness to listen to your stakeholders and constituents. We also placed a strategic plan survey on our website and have reached out to our faculty and staff and community members and parents to take that survey. And that survey will remain in place until the end of this week on Friday, right up until the business meeting on the board, of the board meeting the next, following Monday. We had over 1,100 staff members already respond to the survey. All of the questions received over 90% support, with only two having between a 90 and 95% support. So essentially, the vast majority had over 95% support. The two questions that were between 90 and 95% were student absences support rate was at 94.12% and standardizing computer software was at 92.49%. Still very high support rate, but I wanted to point those out. In addition, we had over 1,100 community and parents respond to the survey. All of the questions, again, had over 90% approval rating or support rating, with only three having between a 90 and a 95% support rating. 93% support rating for reducing the number of students who need remediation when entering the university or college setting. And 93% for our student absences goal. And 91% for standardizing computer software. Again, all quite favorable responses overall. And again, commend you for all of your hard work in helping develop the draft 2011-2014 strategic plan. Any questions?
I will open the floor for discussion. I will begin on Mr. Shue's side.
I'm good with the strategic plan. And I'd say that we put it on the action agenda for next, for the business meeting. Uh, well, it could, either, it doesn't matter. I mean, I, I'm, I'm good with the way it is, so.
I wasn't involved in very much of it, just the last part. And so I'm fine with putting it on either of those agendas.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to see it on action because I think this is very important. And just to have an official, hopefully unanimous vote from the board to support it. Matthew, I did want to point out, at the bottom of some of the charts, it says for the 2010-11 data, that the state will release this information in February 2011. I think it's 2012.
Thank you.
It's on several of the charts. So other than that, I will tell you, I really like this summary version. It's just like very short, concise, has everything listed with clarity. Most of you know I don't like paragraphs of a lot of words. If it's bolded information or visual, give me a chart. And so it's right up my alley. So, thank you.
Good job, Mr. Fur.
No, I'm good.
I'm good and I agree with Cindy. I'm good, and I agree with Cindy. I think a voice vote on it, on the action, would be good.
Well done, sir.
I think you got the thumbs up. We'll place this on the action agenda, and I do agree, this needs to be a public vote. I know that we stated earlier during our meetings, you know, that we have definitely room for growth, but we've done a good job, and we're moving toward a progressive mode for Cabarrus County schools, especially since we're one of the largest, one of the 10 largest within the state of North Carolina. So, we appreciate your hard work. And actually, we appreciate more so that the community had involvement in this. And you said that the staffs or the survey for the parents is still open until this coming Friday, prior to our business meeting? Okay. I want to make sure they get that out there. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, we will move on to 4.5. This is approval of the policies on second reading. We will have Dr. Colleen Sane to the podium. And Dr. Sane, if you are okay, I'm going to do my verbatim going down the line, if you're okay with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Unless there's a particular one you would like to speak on. I will begin with policy 4317, King prohibition. Any comments or statements? Hearing none, I will move to policy 4318, use of electronic communication devices. Comments or statements? Hearing none, I will move to policy 4330, theft, trespass, and damage to property. Comments or statements? Hearing none, policy 4331, assaults, threats, and harassment. Comments or statements? Hearing none, policy 4345, student discipline records. Comments or statements? Hearing none. And actually, this one is being removed, is it still removed? Policy 4360, Dr. Sane, appeals of consequences no greater than short-term suspension?
Yes. We need approval for that.
We do need approval. Okay. Comments or statements? Hearing none. We will move to 4.6, approval of policies on first reading.
I would like to make one comment about this group. It looks like a large number of policies, but all of these policies have either an insertion of the Code of Student Conduct language so that it complies, or it has some legal reference that now applies to that.
Great. Thank you. Now, we will move to 4.6, approval of policies on first reading. Policy 1500, governing principles, safe, orderly, and inviting environment. Comments or questions? Hearing none, policy 1740/4040, student and parent grievance procedure. Comments or statements? Hearing none, policy 2500, hearings before the board. Comments or statements? Hearing none, policy 3430, school improvement plan. Comments or statements? Hearing none, policy 3470, 4305, alternative learning programs, schools. I should, I guess, say questions or comments. Hearing none, policy 3520, exceptional children programs, rights of students with disabilities. Comments or questions? Hearing none, policy 4115, behavior standards for transfer students. Comments or questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm concerned a little bit about this one, that, 4115?
Mm-hmm.
That the student's parent, guardian, or custodian must provide a statement under oath or affirmation indicating that the student, you know, was basically not under suspension, expulsion, and whatnot. Is there not the requirement to get records from the prior state or prior school?
Absolutely. But sometimes that takes a little time. In one of our neighboring counties, it does sometimes take some excessive time, and our goal is to get the student enrolled as quickly as possible, if it's the right thing to do.
Okay. Was, there's nothing in here to say that a student acceptance may be reversed if adversarial information comes to light when records are received, something of that sort? Do you know if we can legally add something like that?
Marcus not here, but I'll be glad to email him and make sure that that's okay.
And I'll be glad to pull that one.
Okay. Would you restate that, please?
And I, I'm not sure where to stick it in here.
Okay.
But, but my thought is that we, the board, or whatever the appropriate wording is, reserves the right to rescind transfer acceptance...
Sure.
Upon receipt of final records, or something like that.
That works.
So, whatever the legal, whatever the good wording is, but that's the thought.
I'll get with Mark on that one.
Okay. Thanks.
Other board members okay with that, or any other alternative verbiage? Okay. Dr. Sane, I'm going to pull that one. It looks like the majority of these will go on the consent agenda, but I will place that on the action. Okay. Okay. Policy 4260, student sex offenders. Comments or questions? Hearing none, policy 4301, authority of school personnel. Comments or questions? Hearing none, 4307, disciplinary action of exceptional children, students with disabilities. Comments or questions? Hearing none, policy 4310, integrity and civility. Comments or questions? Hearing none, policy 4315, disruptive behavior. Comments or questions?
Madam Chair, something I've noticed in the policies, and maybe, given the light of knowing an elementary teacher at this point, the policies seem to be much more directed to, I'll say, middle school to high school, and behaviors that may be disruptive at that age, as opposed to younger students. And I'm wondering if discipline is handled significantly different?
It is. We will be bringing to you, to share with you as a report, the Student Code of Conduct, which differentiates and actually has a lot of the elementary school behaviors at a level one, where we don't suspend, we don't, we try to do something to correct the student behavior, but help them also understand that there's a better way to do things. So, yes, ma'am.
Okay. But that won't be in policy, that's in the student?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, I said, just reading it with a little different flavor these days.
Right.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
How it is? Okay. Policy 4316, student dress code. And I will tell you that I've actually had a little bit of interaction with Mark. And Dr. Sane, I apologize, I failed to copy you on it. I keep forgetting that transition there. So, I'm going to ask that that be placed on the action agenda, and I'll forward that to you tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Policy 4320, tobacco products, students. Comments or questions? Hearing none, policy 4325, drugs and alcohol. Comments or questions? Hearing none, policy 4340, school-level investigations. Comments or questions? Hearing none, policy 4341, parental involvement in student behavior issues. Comments or questions? Hearing none, policy 4352, removal of student during the day. Comments or questions?
I found it odd that we were removing guardian. Sorry. I just thought, I found it odd we were removing guardian. I don't know, I was trying to look and see if that was the only one. I may have missed it in others, but it seems like, for a long time, you go out of your way to make sure you catch parent and guardian, and this is going the other way. Anyway.
The, the initial policies defined parent as including guardian, but I think on a night when I was not here, the board decided that we would go back and include guardian, so let me put that back in for you, just to be safe.
Are all board members comfortable with that change? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Then, by consensus, may I have a shake of the head that we place all of these on second reading and first reading on the consent agenda, with the exception of policy 4115 and 4316, which will be placed on the action, action agenda for next Monday? Yes? Good. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr... Yes.
I just have a question for my own information, since I haven't been here, as you've gone over all of these. Do we have a policy on social media?
On social media? Yes, ma'am.
Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I believe it's, I hate to say, I'll send it to you, okay? I'd hate to be wrong.
Thank you, Dr. Sane.